Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting.
In very general terms, I think it's fair to say that the budget, a very high percentage of the resource allocation that's captured in the budget is really about keeping the regular programs and services going. So what we really want to talk to you about tonight is, in addition to that, what is it that we see our programs doing to address what we consider, based on feedback we've received over many, many years in conversation with the city council, our interpretation of some highest priority issues and needs that we've attempted to address in this budget. So again, just in terms of orientation to the presentation tonight, we're going to move around the room in this order. So we'll start with a big-picture overview of the financial issues that the budget represents from our finance director, and then move around the table with an eye towards, it's very difficult for us to get away from the construct of individual departments talking to you about what they do and how they see the future, but what we've attempted to do is to organize these not exactly around departments, but more so around key issue areas and objectives, because virtually everything that we do has an interdepartmental and a team approach to dealing with how we deliver service. There's almost, almost nothing that I can, of significance that I can think of that doesn't require departments working together to make sure that what we're doing is a best possible way to meet the objectives and the needs of the community. So with that, I will turn to the, I would just say one more time that we invite and welcome your comments and your questions tonight. We will pause at any point you would like, but we will be pausing deliberately at the end of each speaker's commentary to invite your questions, comments, and anything that, this is your meeting, we have a lot prepared to talk to you about, but please don't hesitate to let us know when you have something that you want to make sure we're either hearing or responding to.
And I think that's great, because that was something I looked forward to each department that I went through, is what did the department do? And it's so surprising, the long list of things in just one year.
Exactly.
And then it's nice to go to the next part, which is what are the goals that is coming here.
Right.
That's good.
Good, well hey, I-
You should go up in the lobby or something.
Great idea, great idea. We had a little trouble today technically getting the writing big, but I think, you know, putting it all on one paper with small writing, it kind of gives you a-
It's pretty long, it could go all the way to the floor.
It could, if you put all of them.
Good.
Anyway.
I know that's kind of small, but it is the printout of exactly what's in the budget, so if you turn to the general fund section and pull up the general fund revenues, you'll be able to follow along. I wanted to kind of let you know where you could see where this information is actually coming.
If you stop for a second, we'll find the page.
Sure.
Great, E5.
So if you go to E6.
No, the E6, actually. E6 is revenues.
So I'm going to begin my portion of tonight's presentation by going over the fiscal information for the general fund and the reserve funds, and I will cover the financial information for the enterprise funds and the capital improvement program later in this presentation. So total projected general fund revenue for 2016-17 is approximately $42 million. This is an increase of $1.4 million, or 3% over the 15-16 amended budget. It's important to note that we had some very significant impacts to revenues for fiscal year 2016-17. And to give you an example, if you looked at prior year's budget 15-16, you would see that we had projected a 6% increase in revenue, and this year we're only projecting a 3%. The reason for that is we have a reduction in sales tax revenue due to the relocation of one of the city's larger businesses to another city, and this business was one of the city's top 25 sales tax generators. We also, as I mentioned in several of the quarterly reports, the business tax is down due to one of the city's businesses adjusting their calculation to only include domestic receipts. We also are becoming a standalone fire department, which means that we will no longer be receiving the reimbursement from the city of Millbrae as we have in the past, and that was budgeted in previous revenues. And lastly, we are decreasing the franchise fee and reducing the equity earnings transfer from the cable enterprise. So all of these combined resulted in an estimated $1 million decrease in revenues for 16-17. So a majority of the projected 2016-17 general fund revenue comes from taxes in six different categories, and that is sales tax, property tax, transit occupancy tax, motor vehicle license fees, card room fees, and business taxes. And these make up 68% of the total revenue for the general fund. And as you can see at the top of the page under taxes, sales tax is budgeted at $7.4 million, and this makes up 18% of the total revenues of the general fund. And property tax at $9 million makes it 21% of the general fund, which are the two largest categories. On general fund expenditures, and this is on E7, consistent with the prior year practice and the city council budget policy, the proposed budget reflects efforts across all departments and operating programs to control and contain cost. For 2016-17, total proposed expenditures of $41.5 million are 0% higher than the 15-16 amended budget. However, the 2015-16 amended budget includes the approval of one-time supplemental enhancements costs of $544,000, as well as $188,000 in city council-approved carryover appropriations for ongoing projects. A more accurate comparison would be to subtract out these one-time enhancements and carryovers, which would result in the expenditures being approximately $880,000 or 2% higher than the 15-16 budget, which is significant, or is still lower than the United States Labor April Consumer Price Index of 2.7%. So we're still below CPI. This increase in expenditures is a result of increased cost of providing services, including increased salary, health benefits, and employee retirement contribution costs in accordance with the city's memorandum of understanding with its bargaining units, and increased salary costs related to transitioning to a standalone fire agency. For the coming year, the budget projects a surplus of $407,000, and this is on E5, if you go back to that. This surplus allows the city council, as the city manager explained earlier, to consider some changes to improve the city's organization and operation. The general fund budget proposes limited supplemental expenditures presented as service-level enhancements. Total proposed ongoing enhancements in the general fund amounts to approximately $365,000, and will be covered throughout this presentation. Be happy to answer any questions if you have on the general fund.
Anything this time?
So as far as the sales tax, and I understand, I don't know what business left, but what is it if you took that business out, what is, you know, the trend with sales tax? So we're still-
So yeah, so we still have an increase, that's why it's not decreasing as much as, if you look at the estimated actual in 15-16 compared to what we budgeted, it's not as big a decrease as what the, go ahead.
What was that number right there, if they were on average?
You know, I don't-
About half a million, 300,000?
Sales taxes increased over last year.
Yeah, and I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, we have it here.
I look under estimating actual, so actually it looks like it's still going down 8%.
Yeah, so if you look on page E6, the finance director indicated earlier that various decreases in individual revenue categories total up to a total of $1 million of decrease, but overall with growth in some others, in particular-
Property tax.
You see property tax and-
TOT.
TOT, pretty significant increases make up even more than the decline for an overall increase.
So what I was pointing out is that if we did not lose that business-
Correct.
We'd have a significant increase in sales tax.
Yeah.
And if you look on E6 too, I'm glad you showed this, you can see in the amended budget, originally we had $8.1 million as a, but we're estimating really we're going to get about 7.6. This is because the 8.1 was a, just a little, you know, we depend or not depend, rely on our sales tax consultant to help us, and when she, or they gave us that information, it was inaccurate. So that's, that's why we're a little, you can see the trend is around 7.6, 7.5. So we're only estimating, I think, less than $100,000 decrease, right? When you look at estimated actual against what we're seeing for 16-17.
This is actually the first year in my experience that we've, that we've had that little glitch that the director just indicated, where the sales tax consultant's estimates were incorrect. We've generally used-
That much, yeah.
A middle-of-the-road, fairly conservative projection for sales tax, and we've generally been very close to right on.
Right. And it was corrected later, but it was after the budget had already been adopted, so. Okay. Just want to move on and explain a little bit about the reserve funds. So the reserve policy of the city of San Bruno was established in 2013 to provide the reserve funds that support the city council's commitment to ensuring financial stability and sustainability of operations during times of fiscal constraint and emergency situations. The establishment of these reserve funds are important to developing a long-term financial plan that provides reasonable funding resources for the city's future needs. Reserve funds ensures that financial resources are available to allow for the continuation of services in the event of a significant economic downturn or catastrophic event. It provides assurances to residents and bondholders of city debt that the city is well-prepared to deal with times of potential uncertainty. In addition, it provides a funding source for general capital improvement projects and one-time initiatives. Each year, the city council adopts a one-year capital improvement budget and a five-year capital improvement plan that includes projects of significant importance to the city that have no dedicated funding source. These projects include improvements to city facilities, streets, stormwater projects, parks, and technology. And the establishment of the reserve funds dedicated to these types of projects and initiatives will ensure that resources are available to allow the city to implement its vision. On the first, so the general fund, where the 1.5 policy is the normal operating general fund, and then the second column is, or the second row is the general fund reserve, which is 25% of budgeted appropriations. So this was established with the goal of maintaining a target fund balance of the 25%. The general fund reserve balance shall not fall below 15% of general fund operating expenditures, except in a declaration of emergency. The general fund can only be utilized through resolution by the city council, and appropriation of these funds will be reserved for the following situations: a decrease in revenues in excess of 5%, the loss of revenue from another government entity, or one-time non-reoccurring initiatives of the city council deemed of significant, significant importance to the city. We also have the emergency disaster reserve, which is, kind of skipped around, let me see, let me go back, capital improvement one-time reserve is the next line. So the capital improvement one-time initiative reserve fund was established with the goal of obtaining an initial fund balance of $5 million, and this fund is to be used for projects and initiatives throughout the city that have no identifiable funding source. And while this was an initial goal of $5 million, funds shall continue to be added to this fund until it has reached a balance of $8 million. So you can see that at 16-17, we are estimating about a $6.3 million ending balance in that fund. And then the emergency disaster reserve fund was established with the goal of maintaining a target balance of $3 million, and this fund is intended to be utilized in the event of a declaration of emergency. And then the last three reserve funds, the central garage reserve, building and facility reserve, and the technology reserves are funded at a target amount of 25% of budgeted department expenditures, and not to drop below 15%, except in a declaration of emergency. And once these reserves have been funded at the target amount, all fund balances in excess of this amount can be used for one-time initiatives and/or to provide a reduction in allocations from departments. So you can see they all had significant ending balances in 15-16, and their targets were much lower, so we reduced the allocation in 16-17 to those funds.
So the result of that means that departmental expenditures reduce as a result of those allocations reducing in, in order to get the, get the reserve fund balances in better aligned with the city council's 25% policy. Jumping back to the general fund capital reserve, could you comment briefly about why that decline in the balance from 15-16 to 16-17?
3.2 million.
Yeah. So the 9.5 to the 6.3?
Yes.
So I'll explain it later also in the presentation, but we are projecting, are proposing to use $3.2 million on CIP projects that we feel are critical and very important to actually to do this year. And then a million of that, of the 3.2, is the million dollars that the council directed us from the reimbursement from the trust, so it's part of the salary, so it went to the payment management program. So that's why in 9.5 is significantly higher, because it includes a transfer of the $3 million into the capital reserve, and then that will be used $1 million each year for the $3 million. So, and then I think Jimmy will be talking about that during the payment management part.
So for the general fund, the balance of what target balance is 1.5 million, and we're estimating 2.3?
Correct. So that 2.3 is available for one-time initiatives or ongoing, so the ongoing amount is also included in that. So when I did my presentation, let's see, when we went back here, that 407 is also included in that number that we mentioned could be used for ongoing supplemental enhancements, and then the remaining difference could be used for one-time initiatives. And if, if that, those are not approved during the budget process, that money will funnel into, you know, I've explained before, it's sort of a waterfall, it starts in the general fund and then goes into the capital reserve. So that-
So she would wash down the 2.3, whatever you spend, whatever's left over above 1.5, cascades down into the other reserves to make sure they stay at their target balances.
So it would go into the general fund capital reserve.
That's what she means by water.
Yeah. I was just like, think of it, because it could fall into a different bucket, so, and then it could be used for capital projects.
Thank you.
One last thing on my part is, the finance, one of the finance department's initiatives for 2016-17 is to update the city's purchasing policy, and a purchasing, purchasing policy is a set of instructions that ensures that the contracting and purchasing functions can be carried out efficiently and uniformly. Adherence to this policy is essential to accomplishing this goal. Currently, the city's purchasing policy is very out of date. It is important that this policy be updated in order to include purchasing green guidelines, which could assist with grant opportunities, comply with new state or federal laws, and to provide for a more efficient purchasing process. This will be especially important this year as we are transitioning to new auditors, and one of the things that they will be looking at is the city's purchasing policy, and comparing it to make sure that we are in compliance with laws and that we are all following that policy. So, so it will be looked at and probably talked about during the audit process.
Can you elaborate on the purchasing, purchasing what?
So-
In-house stuff or-
So we have a purchasing policy now that tells us when we go out to bid, or what limits the, I can approve, what limits the city manager can approve, and what would go before the city council, and different items like that. So I think when I looked, the ordinance is from 1988, but I think there was a small change in 2010. They tried to redo the policy, but I don't think it was ever adopted, so I'm not sure when the last, so I think it's, it's pretty out of date.
So that, this is positive. I left in 2000, and I know when I worked here in the 80s, it's never changed.
Right.
Something I brought up, because I think it also could streamline, and the burden it puts on staff at the levels that it is, that have not gone up, is, we're taking, it's silly.
Yeah, yeah, it is, I mean-
And so antiquated, outdated, hamstrung, and needs to be changed, and I'd like to have that more of a priority in that.
Sure. And it really ties our hands a lot in, during the purchasing process, so. So if there's not any more questions, I'm going to turn it over to David, our community development director, to go over the economic portion of the presentation.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the next portion of this presentation has to do with growing community economic vitality and assuring city fiscal stability. And as we look at the slide before you, the first area talks about improving appearances and revitalization of the downtown, and specifically, there are two items that come forward: downtown parking management plan and downtown streetscape plan. But before I get to those, I'd like to point out that the city of San Bruno, in, in 2013, by adopting the transit corridors plan, really established a base, a vision for the future of the downtown area. And that was a major initiative in determining how we should grow, how we should redevelop that area. And then in 2014, the community passed measure N, allowing for building heights to be increased in the transit corridors plan area. So within that area, it's 155 acres, it focuses on our downtown San Mateo Avenue and the surrounding transit corridor areas. Now, following up on the adoption of the TCP, the Transit Corridors Plan, and passage of measure N, which really established the vision for creating a compact, mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly downtown that is also transit-friendly, we're now looking at going forward and implementing that plan. And one of the key areas that we need to look at is, as we bring more people, more jobs, housing, businesses to the downtown area, how do we manage parking? It's critical that we have enough parking, but not too much parking, and that we place the parking in the right locations. So one of the implementation measures in the Transit Corridors Plan is to prepare and adopt a parking management plan. Our staff is working with CCAG, and actually coming before you at your next planning commission meeting, is a recommendation to-
We're city council.
We're city council meeting.
Sorry, city council meeting.
We're going to the planning commission meeting.
Sorry about that. At your, at your city council meeting coming up, is a recommendation by staff to support an application to CCAG for a grant to prepare the parking management plan. So you'll be seeing that shortly. The next item is a streetscape plan. So it's also important within the downtown area to create the right environment to encourage investment and revitalization of the downtown, to really encourage private investment in the downtown. So that's an implementation measure of the TCP. We're recommending in this proposed budget that you set aside, you appropriate $125,000 to prepare that streetscape plan. We would be looking at preparing a unified theme for our downtown area, looking at landscaping furnishings, street furnishings, pavement materials, et cetera, to create an inviting environment to revitalize the downtown area. So those are two measures that are coming forward to you. In the downtown, it's not just about creating that environment, the parking management and the streetscape plan, it's also about working with property owners and developers in this area. And as we attract and support new development, our staff, our collective staff, all departments, really spend the time to work with property owners and developers to explain our policy documents, like the TCP, bring them in, sit them down, talk to them about what are the requirements, what's the roadmap to go through our process to get the necessary permits and approvals to do their project. That is extremely important, extremely important to build that trust, to really inform property owners and prospective developers about the requirements of the city. We're seeing great success right now. We have the TCP, we have the vision, the city has passed measure N, we have a strong economy, we have strong interest in our community right now, and we're seeing a number of development projects moving forward. On the slide, you see the bottom right, the Plaza project, at the southern gateway to our downtown, a mixed-use project. That used to be the site of the El Camino Cinema Building, that's been taken down. The three adjoining buildings have been taken down. This project is now, now moving forward to construction, and we expect construction to occur on this building later this year. That took quite a bit of work, sitting down, working with the developer and the property owners, and bringing that, that project together. We have another project going on in the TCP, a dialysis center at 841 San Bruno Avenue, and that's gone through the entitlement process, demolition of the existing building, the 841 San Bruno Avenue will happen soon. And now we're working with another project in the Transit Corridors Plan area, right across from the Caltrain station, and that's 111 San Bruno Avenue. That's the former First National Bank building that's been vacant for many, many years. And staff has worked very closely with the property owner there and the adjoining property owner, to bring those two parties together to develop a concept plan for about 60 residential units and about 8,400 square feet of commercial space. It's a concept plan, but it is moving forward, but it really took kind of sitting down, explaining what are the code requirements? How could those code requirements be used in a way to really facilitate these two parties coming together, listening to their interests, bringing them together, and we have a concept plan? We feel that that's going to move forward fairly quickly for project review, and subsequently for permits and approvals, and later on, demolition of the existing building and construction of a new building. So it really takes that, working with the developer and property interests to really move things along, even with the TCP, the measure N, and the good economy. Well, how do we fund all this? One, one thing we need to look at, and actually, our finance director has put out an RFP, a request for proposals, proposals have come in, we're going to be looking at a development impact fee for the TCP area and wider area. The idea there with the development impact fee is that there are certain improvements, public facility improvements, they could be roads, storm drain lines, water lines, sewer lines, parks. These kinds of development needs to support new development that's coming to our community could be paid for, and should be paid for, at least proportionally, by new development coming in. So the idea is, we will be looking at bringing to the city council later on this year, a development impact fee study for your consideration, so that that's a way that we can look at funding expansion, needed expansion, to support revitalization and redevelopment within our TCP area and beyond. Be happy to answer any questions you might have on this first slide.
Anything?
So I'm looking at, in the planning, it-
Enhancements.
Sorry, there's no page, but in your enhancement summary?
Yes, uh-huh.
It mentions the streetscape plan, but it didn't mention the parking management plan, so that's added-
I'd be happy to explain that. So the streetscape plan is mentioned in the enhancements before you, it's $125,000. As I mentioned, for the downtown parking management plan, we've identified a potential grant opportunity through CCAG.
Also a grant, okay.
And the grant application support letter is going to come to you at your next city council meeting for consideration. I should point out that, as you bring up in the, in the enhancements, with this increased development activity, I've mentioned a number of projects, and there are many more that are in process, by the way. In the enhancements, to, to really support being able to handle those projects and handle them in a responsive, timely, and efficient way, we are looking for your support on a number of enhancements. So for example, our counterstaff, our counterstaff in community development is quite busy, we have phones, many, many customers, sometimes we have four or five people backed up in line. We're looking for a half-time person, a part-time person, to assist at the counter. You can imagine with these buildings coming forward, I mentioned the Plaza, we also have 841, the dialysis center, we have SF Police Credit Union in the, in the business park here in town, the hotel project, and other projects. We're requesting consideration of a part-time building inspector as well in the enhancements, and also an assistant planner, a contract assistant planner. and also an assistant planner, a contract assistant planner. These positions are contract positions, because we understand that there are fluctuations in the economy and development activity, but in order to really serve, in a timely and efficient way, the activity that's coming in, we believe we need those positions. So just wanted to clarify that for you.
And again, I don't want to throw your presentation, but just really quick, since it's on my mind.
Sure.
When we're talking about a part-time temp, not a permanent person at the counter for that, because you're four or five deep, what time period were you looking for that part-time person to work in one day?
You know, it would be probably midday, probably midday, to cover us, say, 10 to 2, something like that, would be probably the timeframe we'd be looking for. And also phones. We not only have, you know, quite a bit of counter activity, we have quite a few phone calls coming in, so the idea is that the part-time person that would assist at the counter would not only provide some counter assistance, but could answer phones and provide general support, so that we can be more available, both at the counter and on the phone.
And did you base that on the tallies by the sheet of folks that are signing in? Because I would assume early mornings and after lunches, in the afternoon time, it starts to die down, like most cities do that aren't busy.
Yeah. Well, you know, we have to cover lunchtime, for example, and we do have quite a few people coming in. We would look at, we would look at our activity, and if we need to adjust that timeframe, it's part-time. We're looking for part-time. We would want to serve our customers. So if we need to adjust that timeframe, given lunch schedules and activity at the counter, we would do that.
That's right, that there was some metric used to this proposal of that, rather than, say, I think it's 10 to 2, because I know everybody signs in. So we have a time when we have the peak. So I would assume we use that data in order to derive around the 10 to 2 timeframe.
Right. We can refine that, we'll look at it. We have quite a few phone calls that are coming in, that I'd like to be more responsive on the phone. I also see that, at various times, we have four or five people deep, waiting at our counter, I'd like to respond to that. And so as we need to, we'll adjust that timeframe accordingly.
And I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
And I also just wanted to mention, in the general fund revenues, the building and planning revenues are going up considerably to help offset some of this cost. We did reflect the increase in the activity.
At the end of the first quarter, it's 33.16.
Whoa, whoa!
Cleveland.
[laughing]
Whoa, whoa! I heard earlier at my meeting.
Do you ever hear of a DVR?
Oh, that was a great one.
No, I was gonna talk a little. I was gonna fall off. I was just looking at a score.
Sorry, did I say that out loud?
It's on tape.
That was great.
David, I don't want to get ahead of things, but when I went through it and I saw it develop, the downtown streetscape, the hair went up the back of my neck, because we've done this. We've done this many times. In 20 years, we've made San Bruno Downtown, San Bruno, look really nice. And you presented the opposite ends of the downtown that are going to look great, and that what we're, you know, what we both look forward to. And then you handed me this draft thing on signage before the meeting. What are we going to do, and how are we going to get the buy-in from the business owners? It's great that we've got developers and new businesses that want to come to San Bruno, but we've got existing businesses here who have, for as long as we've been sitting up here, have been resistant to any kind of proactiveness, any kind of development, any kind of even abiding by the law. They want us to do it. And so now, we're going to be proposing a, this is what San Bruno Downtown can look like, and we're going to be stuck, because we're not going to be able to produce it without the buy-in of the downtown businesses. And I understand that, you know, later, you know, next slide is going to address some of those things.
It will.
But it's gotta be a change in culture, because it just can't be a police deal.
Right. The next slide, the next slide, I'll get into that, but let me just add one more thing about the downtown streetscape plan. It not only establishes what the public realm environment would look like. I'll give you an example. As we're working with the Plaza Project, lower right of that slide, we don't have a downtown design plan for streetscape at this time. So we have an opportunity right now to work with that developer, to say, this is the vision, this is what we want. And soon, with 111 San Bruno Avenue, as that moves forward across from the Caltrain Station, we'll have a similar opportunity. So by having that streetscape plan, and as we have new development and redevelopment in this area, we can say to these development interests, this is the design plan. When you install your frontage improvements, this is what you need to design to, and will have a consistent look throughout our downtown. And then, as we have the opportunities to identify funds, to do our own work, we can do that as well. But if we have the plan in place, when projects like this come along, we can say, build accordingly. And that's a real advantage.
So I might jump in here and say, so if you look at the picture that's here, and this is obviously just a schematic rendering, but you see the attractiveness of the wide sidewalks, the trees. That may or may not be precisely what the vision is, but certainly, that's not what currently exists. And the plan, the council member is absolutely correct. We've done this many times over the last couple of decades, at least. The vision that's articulated in the Transit Corridor Plan necessarily has, needs to have requirements and expectations for the new development that we vision here. And as the Director indicated, without a plan, we get more of the same. This isn't about how simply to clean up or pretty up what exists. It's complementing the vision for the future that the Transit Corridor Plan expresses, and making sure that that becomes real, and that we're not making it up as we go along with each project approval. So the developer draws this, maybe that's what they intend to build. Is that what we want? Is that the specific for the exterior aesthetic, the streetscape's aesthetic of that building, and the one next to it, and the one down the street from it, as it goes along?
The TCP dictates that.
It does, but it doesn't have the specifics.
Well, then we have design guidelines, too. And again, I don't want to be the devil's advocate, but what's to say that gets built just like that, and then, you know, within a few years, you've got business owners that are, you know, that are not complying with signage?
Well, we'll get to that in a minute. We'll get to that in a minute. You know, as the City Manager indicated, you know, what we have in the TCP are broad guidelines. We need to go to the next level to have specific details, so that when projects like this come forward, we can say, this is the specific design, these are the types of trees, these are the types of furnishings, this is the type of pavement treatment that we're looking for in this area, the type of grates around the trees. That level of detail is the next step. We don't have that currently. That's what we're talking about.
But that developer's not providing the grates around the trees, is he?
Yes, they will. Yes, they will. But, you know, we don't, again, have the vision for the entire downtown.
So I'm hearing what you said, and what Ken is saying, just that for the existing businesses, they need to comply with the ordinances. We don't need to make up new ordinances for them to shape up. As a former code enforcement officer, I did that job, when we would get, hey, downtown's looking a little shabby here, let's go out there and tell everybody to get their signs cut back, and remove all the paint up on the windows, block, and everything, and it wasn't fun. Because there is a different culture downtown. We have a diverse downtown, and there's different understandings of those people that come from different, that have different cultures. And they're, many times, they're struggling, and that they think that's what it takes in order to attract the businesses, to have a really, really big sign. So we need to enforce our ordinances, or we need to change. And I see that we benefit by having specifics in a plan, but it's not our, I don't believe that it's going to be the new buildings that are going to look shabby. It's the older buildings that have kind of just degraded, and that we have to start enforcing the rules that we already have.
Why don't you reorder your bullet points here, and jump right into commercial signage?
Okay. So, thank you. Thank you for the introduction to this next topic. So looking at protecting and improving community aesthetics and safety as an overall subject, let's look at proactive code enforcement. And that's what you're talking about.
That's a very word, because it wasn't proactive. It's not proactive.
Okay.
Now, if you're going to say it's proactive, then that's going to be something new in San Bruno.
So we're suggesting-
Excellent.
So we're suggesting that, and let's go right to non-compliant commercial signage, kind of where you stepped off, and let me pick it up from there. So what we're doing in that area, and I gave you a couple of handouts at the start of the meeting, and informational handouts. One is on illegal dumping, and the other one is on signage. And let's start with signage. So last year, when we had a meeting like this, this very same meeting, councilmembers were talking about code enforcement, and we gave you the numbers, how many cases opened, how many cases closed, and this year, it's about 171, 173, something like that, and we kind of heard from you. That's all well and good, sounds like you're doing a lot, but we want to see some meaningful change. We want to see change. And so what we're working on right now, we're looking at the area from San Bruno Avenue to El Camino Real on San Mateo Avenue. Our staff members, planning and code enforcement staff members, have surveyed that area. They photographed the area, they surveyed it, determined which businesses have non-compliant signs. They found about 23 businesses in that area that have clearly non-compliant signs. And they prepared that handout that you have there. They actually went door to door, up and down that street, and talked with merchants and property owners, and they did this about three to four weeks ago, and talked about, well, let me tell you what the code says. Let me inform you, let me educate you. What does the San Bruno Code say about signage? And they looked around, they observed, they said, you know, in many cases, we found that instead of having not more than 25% of their glazing their windows with signage, they had 70, 80, 90%. One business had nearly 100%, it was unbelievable.
Oh, no, it's been a long time.
So anyway, you know, they informed, they educated, they provided the handout, and they said, we're going to come back in about 30 days. And they did that, and we're kind of starting with that area. Now, it's a process, but already, we've had, you know, a couple of successes. I'm going to call them successes. One, and I'll kind of identify, 741 San Mateo Avenue, Selfie's Bistro. There was a sign up there, a rooftop sign, we talked to the folks there, it's down, and we're working with them on a revised sign program. At 601 San Mateo Avenue, that's one of those where it was nearly covered with signage on the windows. It's down to about 25%, and others are coming along. So the plan is, this non-
601.
601. It's a cell phone store. It's a cell phone store.
Oh, yeah, the corner one.
That's right. It's a cell phone store at 601 San Mateo Avenue. So it's really, really come a long way in the last, you know, few weeks. So the staff is going to continue working with the property owners and merchants in the downtown. The intent is inform, educate, kind of work with them to, you know, point out what's not compliant, try to get them to comply, and eventually, if there's noncompliance, the idea would be to, you know, move through a more formal code enforcement process, but to give them the clear opportunity to conform. And already, we're noticing, those are major successes, I'll call them major successes, but we're already noticing illegal signs coming down, people coming in for permits, and we've been doing this only three or four weeks. So that's the sort of more proactive code enforcement program that we have in mind. The idea, this is kind of a pilot, we'll focus on that. As we have, you know, some success, we'll expand it out. But I think, I think that's the kind of activity, the kind of approach, information, education, but staying with it, that I think we heard from you last year, that's what we're intending to do, that's what we're doing. I'll move on, if I could, to some of the others here. Illegal dumping. Illegal dumping's an issue. It's a fairly large issue in our community, and it really detracts. It's in the downtown, near the highway on-ramp, off-ramp areas, we see it. We have formed a group, it's a Neighborhood Preservation Task Force, police, public services, community development, other staff members have come together. I mean, illegal dumping is an issue for many different departments. It's not just community development, it's not just code enforcement. It's police, it's public services, public works. It's all of us, really. We have a lot of field personnel in this community, driving around this community. It's kind of observing, reporting, working with, informing property owners and merchants about what our codes are. The second handout or flyer that you have is about illegal dumping. Again, the approach is to inform, to educate, and then work with people to conform. This program, too, is really starting to work very well. We've been working with the other departments very well, very collectively, and we've reached out to recology. We've defined areas of responsibility, so private property code enforcement, the area of, say, sidewalks and parkway strips, we've reached out to recology, and they have really stepped up as a good partner, and they're responding to dumping in those areas. Public services, Corp Yard has done an excellent job in terms of the public right-of-way, and we've been contacting other agencies, Caltrans, for example. We've established a point of contact within community development. Our contract code enforcement officer is doing basically triage for us, central point of contact with these areas of defined responsibility. She's taking in the calls, emails and calls, contacting the various, you know, departments or recology, and really seeing some good movement in this area. We've had about, in the last two months or so, 30 calls out to recology within two days. A day, sometimes within a day, but typically, within two days, recology, if it's in that quasi-public sidewalk, parkway strip area, they come out, pick up the materials, and remove it. So we're seeing some real improvement in that area, and it's really been a collective effort. And I really, you know, think it's, we need to refine it, but it's working. Final area is really graffiti removal.
Before you go-
Yeah.
David, I want to call your attention to an enhancement request that's embedded in this budget as well, for two video cameras that we would use and deploy around the town on a moving basis, to keep track of some of these hotspots that are frequent locations for dumping. This as well is a pilot program. The cameras are relatively inexpensive for the type of good that we've seen in a couple of other areas of the city where we're using that kind of technology. And we're hopeful that it can operate both as a deterrent, as well as an opportunity for follow-up identification of persons who are taking advantage of our town and some of our open spaces.
With those, and I know it's not done yet, obviously, in the budget, is that primarily for commercial? Is that going to be in residential? Are we talking about in front of somebody's house?
We're talking about locations that are considered hotspots. They're primarily on public rights-of-way, and in, I'm not going to say commercial, but in, sometimes in commercial areas, but there's numbers of areas, along San Bruno Avenue, for example. What are some of your other areas? There's a place down by the freeway.
Are we finding, are we finding that these organizations that put their collection boxes either on private property, or in some cases, they've been on public property, is that a hotspot? Because I know there was an issue on Mastick?
Yes.
It was one of our parking lots, and someone illegally put one of their collection boxes on the parking lot, and it became a dumping ground.
So we don't allow them-
Because it didn't fit in the box, so they just left it there.
Those boxes are not allowed on public property, and we have acted to see that they're removed anytime they show up. Where they are located on private property, that becomes a code enforcement issue for the property owner to take care of. If you want the box here, then you need to keep it cleaned up.
So we also, I mean, is this initiative with state's staff to also look at unsightly things that might be on private property?
So, we don't allow them?
Because it didn't fit in the box, so they just left it there.
Those boxes are not allowed on public property, and we have acted to see that they're removed anytime they show up. Where they are located on private property, that becomes a code enforcement issue for the property owner to take care of. If you want the box here, then you need to keep it cleaned up.
So, we also, I mean, is this initiative with city staff to also look at unsightly things that might be on private property? In addition to on public property?
It would be, but I think that's part of our normal work.
Right.
The illegal dumping program is really focusing on the illegal dumping, but, you know, if something's unsightly, a nuisance, we'll certainly look at that as well.
Okay, so, I'm not sure if I understood the answer to my question.
Okay.
Public right-of-way, city manager made that clear. So, if a hotspot is deemed in front of a home, are we talking about putting a camera in front of somebody's home, is that a suggestion?
Yeah. We had not been looking at that specifically, we had been looking at locations like, as you enter the town, as you enter San Bruno, on San Bruno Avenue near 7th.
Perfect.
We find in that area oftentimes a collection of dump materials.
You clarify that answer, thank you.
So, the last item I have here is graffiti removal. So, as I think you know, we have a hotline, a graffiti hotline, and you can contact that graffiti hotline, it's on our website, we have a phone number, we have a form you can fill out and you can turn in online, and the phone number is monitored as well as the email is monitored, and we have a graffiti abatement contractor that will go out based on a call from our staff and remove the graffiti. So, we have the hotline, the online form, and we have a graffiti contractor. And our staff is not only, you know, looking for graffiti in the field as part of their regular work, will take obviously calls, complaints. And so, that seems to be very, working very well.
How do you see, do you see an increase from last year, or in your, don't need specifics on numbers, but I mean, do you see this steady or increase?
Similar.
Similar.
Yeah.
And I know we have in our ordinance, if my memory is correct, if it's gang or profanity is within the 24 hours, and if it is other, then there's obviously a little more duration if it's on somebody's public, I mean, on their private property, they're noticed and they have a window in which to-
Councilman, that's correct. If there's profanity or something that's gang-related, even on the weekend, we'll call the graffiti contractor to have the graffiti removed immediately. Otherwise, as you're suggesting, we'll tend to group the graffiti removal and have graffiti removed two or three times a week. But if it's profanity or offensive, we'll have it removed as quickly as possible.
Is there, back when it originated, there was, if it was a continuation on the same property, same structure, that at some point it then became their responsibility or they were billed? Is that still done, or do we, as long as we get it out, we're taking care of that?
It's done the way you're suggesting, unless, again, it's profanity or a concern, we'll have a contractor go out there and remove it immediately. But if it's reoccurring-
Yes.
-we contact the property owner and ask them to-
Councilmember, when we see graffiti in the parks or other-
Anywhere.
...city facilities that we attend to, including Caltrans Station, we have paint that's necessary. We first try to get a hold of Caltrans, get them to get out there and abate it, if, as the director said, if it's profane or if it's just over the top, we will address it.
But there's a policy, so if someone reports it, where it's at, we know what to do.
Right. So, any additional questions regarding this topic, this area?
No, I think the graffiti program is working. I think it's good.
So, Dave, with the illegal dumping-
Yes.
You, so you're developing this handout, where do you intend to give it out to? And then, what's your timeline? Or what do we do when we see someone illegally dumping? Are they reported, or they're sighted, or what do we do with repeat offenders, or have we gotten that far, or are we looking at it?
We are looking at it, and the handout you have is a draft, is stamped, and so we're refining that at this point. The intent, and what we actually do, is that if we have a repeat offender, if we know who has done the illegal dumping, we'll pursue that as a code enforcement action and open up a code case, and proceed to take action against that property owner. Oftentimes with illegal dumping, there is not an identified party associated with the dumping. That's very typical. It's on the street, it's on the sidewalk.
Oh, I know.
And yet, if we identify, let's say, in the material itself, and we do this sometimes, the name or address of a party, our staff will pursue that, both code enforcement and working with police will pursue that to, you know, to find out if indeed that party was the party that dumped the materials. We will do that. So, where we know somebody has done it, we will pursue it as a code enforcement action, and if we don't, if it's just an unidentified party, we'll try to remove the material as quickly as possible.
So, in the code enforcement part, so what happens to that person? Do they get fined? Do they get, I mean, do we make them go clean it up? What do we do?
Well-
I'm looking for deterrence because-
Sure.
-as you know, with Operation Clean Sweep, we pick up tons of garbage every year, and it's, it's very frustrating, and how do we get these people?
Well, we do have our code enforcement program now, and there is the opportunity to fine individuals that have violated our codes, and so illegal dumping would be a code violation and could be fined. As part of refinement of this program, we are looking at our codes, our municipal code, and do we want to look at perhaps increasing level of fines? And so, as part of refinement, we want to look at not only monitoring, but also enforcement and what the fines could or should be for when we do find a party that is dumping, to really have there be a deterrent in place. That is very, very important. So, I think in terms of refining this program, we will want to look at our municipal code, we want to look at and suggest to you fines and penalties that may be stronger and more of a deterrent.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just one last question on the code enforcement. I'm willing to get, wanting to get off this topic. I know when we sat here last year and we discussed the opportunities for an additional code enforcement person to come on, and what they may do, and how to measure it in the metrics.
Great.
Obviously, we're still using a contracted individual, but I believe a job announcement has gone out now. Last time, we talked about how many backlogs we had, and that was, I think, an objective of yours was to go in there, and my comment back then was to measure something. So, if we had 500, we were down to 300, we see progress.
Right.
You just, I think, alluded to about 176 or something, 173 is what the number-
Around 170.
170.
Proximate.
170.
Yeah.
So, where were we last year versus where are we this year?
It's lower this year than last year, but to give you an idea of how we've used the code enforcement officer, I want to point out that not only had, did we have a large backlog, which she has really helped us clear, she has been the one that's really been preparing these materials for us. So, these handouts and other printed materials, this individual has worked with us to prepare. What I'm finding in terms of this position, which I think is very helpful, is that as this person can help coordinate the neighborhood preservation task force, you know, bringing together the other departments and staff, and really help us with public outreach and education, as well as going out in the field, this person is one of the people out doing this sign program, the non-compliant commercial signage program, going door to door. So, by having this individual not only clear the backlog and work on certain cases, but really doing special projects so we can see meaningful change. Sometimes when you just dilute, you just put staff out there, particularly in code enforcement, just doing the day-to-day, yeah, they're working, but in terms of really seeing a difference, making a difference, having an individual that can work on illegal dumping, work on the signage compliance program, go door to door, prepare the informational materials, do that extra work that oftentimes regular staff isn't getting to, can really make a difference, and it is making a difference.
Okay, and I appreciate this, I know that they've been working on this the last couple of months.
Right.
But we've had, they'll say, eight or nine months of them trying to deal with the backlog.
Correct.
So, not now, but what I appreciate is the staff can get back to me then as to what we had last year when we sat here discussing the new position and what we have today.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Well, I already have today, so just to pass it.
I appreciate the proactiveness because you did say that, you did mention in your last presentation a year ago that you were just reacting, and our comments were, we're seeing this stuff.
Right.
We're driving down the street, don't you see it? Doesn't city staff see this stuff? So, this is a major turn, in my belief, that now every department has, I want to say, has just as much pride in the community as we do, because we don't want to see this stuff. We know it's not right.
Right.
We know it shouldn't be there, and who's going to go clean it up? Or who's going to, who's going to tell the property owner or the business owner it needs to change? That's, it's a big, to me, that's a big turn.
Yeah. It's a, it's a large job, and it really requires everybody working together, and I'm really pleased to say, or really do see, everybody working together. And there has been, in recent months, a major change, particularly in these areas.
Go take a look, yeah.
We'll go after the meeting.
It should be noticed.
We're going to take a look.
Try to buy.
So, David, that phone number for, if somebody sees dumping, is it 616-7074 number?
Again, that's a draft.
I understand that, but today-
Yeah.
Today-
Let's give me your phone number.
650-580-3445, that's my number, but that's where they should be called. It's a draft, but I mean, if today somebody sees a mattress, a TV on their corner-
That's right.
-who do they call today?
They'll call community development and call code enforcement in community development.
616-7074.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. So, with that, unless there are more questions, the police chief is going to, you know, move forward with this.
Great, interdiction policing.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council.
I don't need to hear it.
Voice carries.
Good evening, the San Bruno Police Department handled over 33,000 calls in 2015, and we're on track to handle approximately the same number of calls this year. This represents a 12 and a half increase in calls for services 2012. Our requests for services range from noise complaints and resolving neighbor disputes to investing complex and serious violent felonies. As in other cities in the region, we occasionally experience spikes in specific types of crimes, including gang-related activity and residential and auto burglaries. With your support, the department has made significant strides in reinforcing its infrastructure and becoming more efficient and effective. Among these projects is an update to our records management system that provides staff with relevant information in a timely manner and allows for the collaborative sharing of information amongst other agencies in the county. This project has proved extremely successful. A final step in completing this project on our end is the daunting task of transferring all property and evidence from our prior records management system to the new system. Our existing property officer position is tasked with receiving evidence on a daily basis, preparing evidence for court, and returning and/or destroying retained property. This is a demanding and time-consuming position. The department is seeking the addition of a part-time clerk position at 16 hours per week to address this need. The cost of this addition is estimated to be approximately $24,000, and will result in savings of approximately $12,000 per year in subsequent years as we move away from the old records management system. In effect, we're still paying for a system that we're only using for a small portion of our operation, and by cleaning up this one last piece will allow us to move away from that and no longer have to spend those funds on an annual basis. The police department budget before you tonight reflects continued efforts to contain costs and reduce expenditures wherever possible. The police department is excited about the future of San Bruno and eagerly anticipates upcoming development projects, which you've heard about. We continue to strive to remain a strong partner in the progress of the city. We recognize that the city's growth and success will include a greater demand for police services, and additionally, it's anticipated that the type of demand for services may change as well as increase. In preparation for these challenges, the department has embarked on several approaches, including developing a data-driven targeted traffic enforcement plan that effectively focuses enforcement efforts based on documented primary collision factors in areas susceptible to traffic collisions. We are augmenting Office of Traffic Safety funded initiatives, grant-funded initiatives, with self-funded operations including DUI enforcement, speed enforcement details, and pedestrian safety enforcement. The underage DUI education through exposure and repercussions, or U-Deter program, developed by the San Bruno Police Department aimed at preventing young drivers from driving while impaired, has been recognized by both Mothers Against Drunk Driving and the Office of Traffic Safety. The program is being considered to be implemented statewide, which is kind of a neat thing. Additionally, we will continue to work collaboratively with allied regional and county agencies to address quality of life concerns, including homelessness and the issues associated with our homeless population, prostitution, public intoxication, street-level drug use, and human trafficking. Given the enhanced public attention to use of force, and rightfully so, the department aims to increase firearms training from biannual to quarterly training to become consistent with best practices, ensure firearms proficiency, conform to the industry standard, and comply with existing guidelines. This training will coincide with ethical use of force training to include training regarding how and when force is necessary, with an emphasis on de-escalation techniques, in an effort to provide additional options to officers and reduce the number of instances when force may have otherwise been implemented. I'd like to point out that our officers are already very well-trained in this area, and I think we see that on a day-to-day basis, you see it in the police squad, especially dealing with those individuals suffering from mental health issues, and I think it should be noted that the vast majority of those calls for service are addressed at the very lowest level with little or no force ever being used, and I think that's a tribute to the men and women working in the police department now on how they interact with our community. Additionally, we plan to work side-by-side with state and local law enforcement agencies to reduce criminal street gang activity and property crimes in both San Bruno and our surrounding areas. Despite regular arrests, residential and vehicle burglaries continue to be a problem. Leveraging technology, the strategic deployment of personnel, and collaborating with other Bay Area law enforcement agencies has proven to be the most effective way to combat both gang-related activity and burglaries. We've developed a project to enhance the security of the police department facility and staff by hardening access points and upgrading electronic card system readers and video and audio systems. We intend to replace safety equipment that has expired or otherwise exceeded its useful life, including little things like rain gear, traffic safety reflective clothing, chemical agents, which is the OC spray, and Taser cartridges. We're also working to update several of our manuals for state review and approval, including our field training manual, our reserve officer manual, and our explorer program manual. We're in the process of reinitiating our bicycle patrol program on a seasonal, part-time basis, focused on the downtown area, the mall, parks, and schools. We'd also like to see this program address some of the issues that have been mentioned here, including our transient population. We'll take more of a community policing effort when possible, as we've seen recently, be available at special events to access areas where officers in cars would have a difficult time getting to or have to walk significant distances. To do this, we are acquiring the necessary equipment or updating our equipment and providing the necessary training. There are strict rules and training regarding deploying these types of officers in the field, and we've sent two of our officers to a train-the-trainer program so they can come back and provide the necessary training to our personnel. Last year, we replaced, or we removed the cameras affixed to our patrol cars, and we did this due to a lack of functionality and reliability. We learned this from some critical incidents, some critical calls that we responded to and found that the cameras were not as reliable or functional as we would have liked. And this year, we intend to replace those cameras with funds in the equipment reserve fund that's already been allocated for. Finally, as a department, we recognize that our personnel are our greatest resource, and we recognize a need for a committed effort to succession planning. We will soon be recruiting to fill a vacant lieutenant position. Over the next several years, we'll have a majority of our sergeants retiring from the department, so we understand that there's a gap there. And in response to this challenge, we've developed a working group aimed at developing members of the department to assume those supervisory and leadership roles in the future. So, we're kind of excited about that. The men and women of the police department are well-motivated, they share a genuine concern for the city and its residents. We appreciate your support and that of the community. We continue to maintain strong response times for emergency calls, and we manage our resources responsibly, as our mission of providing safety and service to this community is paramount. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You mentioned cameras in the cars.
Yes.
Any idea about cameras on the officers?
Yes, we recognize that body cameras are coming, and I think that they'll be a valuable tool in the field. We are in the process, along with some of our partners locally, in researching how and when we can make that happen. There are several issues that we need to just be more educated on and work through, and before we take that step, we want to make sure that we're doing it right and be as informed as we can. and be as informed as we can. And in a way, we're kind of learning from others in a, in a sense. But we recognize their value and that they'll be coming. And as a, as a part of the program in preparing for the car cameras and going out and seeking vendors and as we develop a request for proposals, one of the mandates will be that those cameras in the cars will be able to, to function with the body cameras. So the technology is there where we can link those together. So we'll be seeking vendors where we have a platform where we can transition to body cameras when the funding and the policy, the adequate policy steps have been taken. So we know what's coming, we're preparing for it and it'll be here. We just need to make sure that we do it the right way.
Do you see it as more of a regional issue?
It would be nice to be a regional issue. We just don't know what, there, there may be mandates that come down that we're not sure of and we don't know whether those would be funded mandates or unfunded mandates as well as some policy issues. But a regional issue would be nice because it would, it would be, it would help agencies our size, which were, were pretty good size for our, for our area here. So I would hope that it would be a regional issue because I think that we'd be able to leverage some of the work that's been done in, in other parts of the Bay Area.
So the council may be aware that the grand jury, the San Antonio County grand jury has recently taken this issue on and has issued a report that will be coming to the city council for your official response within the next thirty to sixty days. And that report identifies some initial best practice and sort of an analysis of what's going on in the county. And obviously, as, as you know, that process, as you know, the grand jury process seeks your comment about that as well. So we're paying, paying close attention through the chief's group of, of providing a collaborative response with other agencies as well.
Anything else for the chief, Irene?
What about the Neighborhood Watch Program? How are you working on promoting that? How successful do you think it is? Is there something else we could be doing?
Yeah, we, we've taken significant steps in, we're a big, I'm a big fan of Neighborhood Watch. I think it's one of our most important crime prevention tools. We have a new support services officer, Sherry Campbell, who's done an excellent job and has a, has a great relationship with the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee, which is our major outlet in developing Neighborhood Watch groups. We have over twenty Neighborhood Watch groups now in, in, in the city of San Bruno. Some are more active than others, but we, we have taken a couple of specific steps to try to increase that or make that more robust. One is we've amended our citizens' survey, the actual survey itself. What we do is we randomly send out customer service surveys to folks that have called us for some type of call for service, whether they needed our services, a police officer went out there. That'll be followed up with a survey on a, on a random basis. And we, with the, in collaboration with the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee, we've included in that survey a questionnaire about participation in Neighborhood Watch, what your existing awareness is in Neighborhood Watch, if you'd like to become more active or start your own group. We give people an avenue to provide their name, provide contact information so we can contact them and that's been, that's been fairly successful. The Citizens Crime Prevention Committee has really been really proactive in, in this and they've done a great job. In fact, just the other day at the, at the Posey Parade and the, the Community Day in the Park, we signed up a couple dozen people who were interested in Neighborhood Watch. So that type of public outreach has been great. We also use the, the website to, to, to try to promote that as well as social media. But it's been, it's been fairly robust. National Night Out is a, is a nice way to promote that. The one area where we, we are struggling a little bit to get folks involved is we, we've tried to schedule a couple of days that have been very successful in the past year or so is bringing Neighborhood Watch groups together so they could learn from one another. Sometimes it's hard to coordinate that many people or that many leaders or block captains. So we're, we're trying to share ideas. And again, some groups are much stronger than others, but the fact that we have more groups and we're getting those email addresses and phone numbers and names via both the survey process and at our events, even Police Day in the Mall, we had a, a table out there and we got a, a real nice response. So it's a, it's a big deal, it's, it's one of our priorities. We see it as a huge crime prevention asset and I think we've taken some significant strides. It's just that some groups are more, are more into it than, than the others.
And I'd like to talk about the bicycle patrols. The few times that I've seen them down in San Antonio, a few years ago when they were active, perhaps they discussed about getting anyone in trouble. They're riding their bicycles on the sidewalk and, you know, it's one of those counter things like.
Sure, they're breaking the law, yeah.
Yeah, and on the other hand, to ride on the street isn't really productive either because, I mean, so, so does it have to be bicycles? I mean, can they walk down the street?
Yeah, there, there, I mean, that's, yeah. Foot patrols down there would be great, those types of things. The nice thing with bicycles is we can, they can still answer calls for service in a relatively timely manner in a, in a short area. And it's not only downtown. There are some exceptions that the vehicle could allow us for what they can do because they are technically an emergency vehicle. But that's part of the training that we send our folks to is to learn, hey, when is it appropriate to ride in certain areas? We think they're very valuable in the parks. I think that, that's a, that's a huge deal. People like to see them downtown. They're, they're just, they seem to be more approachable. People think it's kind of cool that they, they see an officer on a bicycle. But I do agree that foot patrols downtown would be great. You know, it, 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 it's, it's good, it's nice, it's a, it's a great public outreach. However, we, the calls for service sometimes dictate how we, how we do that. And during the daytime is when our, especially in the afternoon, you know, is hours are, are when our calls for service peak. And typically, you'll have officers going call-to-call rather than having the time to, to walk up and down San Antonio. So a lot of it depends on what the demand for service is at the time.
Anything else for the chief? Marty?
Well, I just, I just want to say that, again, going through the accomplishments and what you're planning on, it's, it's very proactive. It's comforting to know that our department is up to date, state-of-the-art things and looking to, you know, stay ahead with, with what's going on in the communities. We see it every day on the news in other communities, what's bad about the police and what the, how the, how the communities, how the residents view the police. And I think you're going in the opposite direction. It sounds as though you are trying to engage the public better, even if it's on a personal basis. I think, I think the, the police being on Nextdoor has made a big difference. And that's probably how, why you're not getting, people don't want to meet, they would rather just sort of engage on, online, you know, through social media some. But that's, the information is getting out there and so I think that's a big plus. And even if it's, is, you know, ride down and, ride the bike down to downtown and just walk a few blocks, I think that's going to go far in the businesses and the residents seeing that the police are not just hiding behind a, you know, in a, in a patrol car. They're actually getting out there and, you know, trying to engage the public. So I, I compliment you on that and, and staying up to date, it's great.
Marty?
I wanted to echo that. Getting on Nextdoor, I think was an excellent idea with the, the way the, the public is now really immersed into social media and having, having Caldwell on there letting people know what's happening. I think that's a, a great way of getting that outreach. I recall the success you've had with your automated, automated license plate readers and from your report a while back, it seemed like you, you were recovering one stolen car a week with one automa, one reader. And I'm just guessing, if you had two, you'd probably recover two. Just it's a matter of how many of them are out there and, and building upon the reputation that if you come into San Bruno with a stolen car, you're going to get caught, so stay out. Because people in stolen cars, they come out and do, do bad things, right? At least that's my limited knowledge of that. So I, I'm hoping to be able to find some way to, to locate funds to, to get you more of those if you need, if you think they're really going to be needed. Or how much more could you do with, with additional readers?
Well, I, I, I think it's good that the public knows that we have a license plate reader out there and I think that initially we saw a huge success and, and we still get regular, we still get regular results from the license plate reader. But it does act as a deterrent. I, I do think that the bad guys know that, that it's out there too and, and they may be a little bit more reluctant to come through town in, in, in those types of cars. It also serves other very valuable investigative purposes for after the fact. We've located people that are at risk. We've helped other agencies put two and two together because they, you know, they, where we've located a car and, and how it's related to their criminal investigation. So it's not only about going out and finding stolen cars. It, it, it serves a very valuable investig, as a valuable investigative tool as well. I will tell you that we have submitted a request through, through a grant to obtain a, a license plate reader that's not affixed to a car, but it looks, it's like a speed trailer. And again, I, I say this on tape and in public because I want people to know that we're doing this and, and let them know that we're proactively, in, in every way that we can combating these types of crimes. It's a very competitive grant. I don't know that we'll, that we'll be successful, but it's something that we're, we're looking for in the fut, looking to do in the future. But we appreciate the support and, you know, we enjoy the success. And, you know, no matter how strong technology is, our most valuable resource is, is people. It's only, our resources are only as strong as those who are using, or the technology is only as strong as those who are using it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the chief?
Yes, how much is, how, how much is it?
A, a license plate reader, a license plate reader affixed to a patrol cars between thirty and forty thousand dollars. The speed trailer that we're looking for is between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars. And the nice, the, the one caveat to that is our current, our existing license plate reader is grant-funded and so is the maintenance, so we have no ongoing costs. So if we do go out and purchase one of our own, there will be an ongoing cost that we would have to research. So there's, there's a little bit more involved than, when ours breaks right now, all we have to do is make a phone call. If we owned our own, we'd have to figure out, you know, whether we had a maintenance program and what would that would cost versus trying to, trying to get it fixed.
I know you alluded to that within the next so many years, you'd see a lot of the sergeants departing, which obviously means trying to build a succession plan, which looks like you're already being proactive about that. Thank you. So with that comes retirements, with that takes a long time, obviously, in public safety, especially in your department, to recruit, train, go through the proper backgrounds. So I'm, I'm wanting to know, is A, are we completely staffed at the department today? And then two, once we receive a official notice from an officer or staff person and it is verified by pers, which I know you need to wait for all of that, how much, how much time do we wait when we have official notice? It's time that they will retire on X date that we start the process?
The answer to your first question is, well, in addition to the lieutenant vacancy, we're kind of holding off on that so it doesn't really affect our patrol staffing levels. We're, we're overcoming that at the administrative level. As far as officers are concerned, we have one true vacancy that we have just recruited for and we actually had interviews yesterday, so we hope to get that person into, into background soon. To answer your question, we usually wait until somebody advises us that they will be retiring and then we immediately initiate that recruitment. The city manager's been very gracious. We're not just talking about police officers, we have other very valuable staff, including community service officers.
Clerks, dispatch, all those.
Yeah, when, when we're talking field units, and the only reason I bring up community service officers is because it's a very transitory position where it's usually young people who are looking to become police officers and that's the, what we, what we're facing now. And we know that we have a couple of community service officers that are out there looking for jobs or in our, in background process with other agencies. And the city manager has allowed us to initiate a recruitment for that position, even before they've given us notice because we, we know that for the most.
It's a matter of time.
Yeah, and we're trying to, to decrease that lag time. But you are right, the, the thing that makes it difficult for, from a police perspective is it's not only the background, it's, once we, there's, there's state guidelines for how long a training program is and it's a four-month training program. So that means it's, it's a, it's a double hit for us in a sense because we, that person is, is on the street for four months, but they don't count as a, as a body on the street because there was somebody else. So it does take some time, but I think that we've worked out a pretty good process on how to anticipate those vacancies and how to try to stay ahead of the, ahead of the curve as much as we can.
And I would appreciate that continuation from the manager's office. I think too far, too long, we, we wait, we put off, it takes too long. And as you said, four months with training and, you know, before, and then they have to be shadowed until they're able to be on their own, so I think that's important. And then on the overtime, it's asking for the same amount of six hundred and forty thousand dollars as last year. How did we do as far as that?
We, we exceeded our overtime budget this year. However, the bottom line personnel costs should be, should be fine if you count the, the overtime plus the, the regular salaries. As you know, the law, I guess the law enforcement overtime is, is a little bit different than traditional overtime. We have those operational needs for overtime. We have court overtime that we really can't control. We have investigations that, that occur that we need to work after hours and we need to, to do things that, that operationally, it's man, you know, it's, we're directed to do that. We can't, can't control when those types of incidents occur or when, when people are subpoenaed for court or how long a jury trial is going to be. So you have that part of your overtime budget, which, which you're always going to have. And then we have the other part, which is replacing vacant positions, trying to replace, you know, extended leave, whether it's family leave or, or an injury or whatever that may be. So I see the overtime kind of in, in two different, two different paradigms, I guess. For example, when we have, when we have a spike in residential burglaries, we don't just sit by and let those happen. We know we don't have, you know, the, the staff on a, on a regular time basis to, to, to do extra. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll use that overtime because it's an operational need and we'll make that decision. And so we have one side which, where we have some discretion and we have the other side where we don't. So it's a, it's a juggling act, it's a balancing act. But while we exceed the overtime budget, we work closely with finance to make sure that if you combine that with regular salaries, our bottom line is, is within the budgeted amount.
Okay, and then on the part-time for a hundred and nine thousand, do we pretty much use that?
Yeah, it, well, we're getting better on that and the only reason I mention that is we have, we've had for, I guess, the past couple of years, a vacant dispatch position. We've recently hired a dispatcher. Up until that point, that dispatcher, that vacancy was often filled, and that's a full-time vacant position, was often filled by what we call per diem or part-time dispatchers. It's actually more economical than paying another dispatcher overtime and it, you can't work your people for, for, you know, forever. So it, it, it gives us a little bit of a buffer. That dispatcher is very close to concluding his training, so we're hoping that, that we won't have the impact that we had on part-time salaries because we won't have that regular, every week, filling with a per diem dispatcher. And again, while the part-time salaries are, we exceed our part-time line item budget, when we compare that to our regular salaries and the overtime, we still meet our, our bottom line for personnel costs.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Close your ears.
There are different medians, mediums in how the community and visitors receive city information. There's the focus, which is mailed out to all residents. There's city inserts and mailers, there's Channel One, there's a city website and as we heard from council members and some of the departments, social media. The use of technology is one of the critical tools that the city and communities state informs. So one of the most visible city technology initiative is the relaunch of the city's website. The new website allows visitors to get information more quickly in addition to being able to do business online. They are able to report code enforcement issues like graffiti and illegal dumping. As the community development director had mentioned, they're able to report problems with playground or, or street concerns. They're able to report potholes and sidewalk issues. This is done through a customer service, customer response module, a CRM. And starting from the launch to currently, we had about a hundred and thirty reports online. However, the majority of people are still calling. That's, they feel more comfortable, they, they're able to get someone right away. And so there are other people who like to use the customer service response module. The website, you're able to post garage sales online and you're also able to get information, which is a, a new feature of capital improvement projects. So if you go to Public Works, you can scroll over a map and a little bubble will pop up and it will give you.
I just turned eighteen and I'll be voting for my first candidate.
That was yesterday.
Technology, isn't it a great thing?
Technology's nuts.
So besides. So besides using the map to get information, you're also able, another new feature is the water account link, so you're able to go online and look at your water usage. And soon, the utility billing and business tax signups will be completed, and so people can go online and sign up for that. So with the new features, people are able to get information more quickly and easily in addition to calling departments as well. Social media has played a huge role in communicating to our residents. We have several city departments using Facebook and Twitter and Nextdoor, as you heard from the chief. The city's public safety departments are also using SMC Alert, which communicates urgent information to residents who sign up. Staff will be developing a comprehensive social media policy to include guidelines on posting content for review and input from the city council, and that will be coming to you in the coming months. The fire department has had great success with their social media messages, and Chief Downey would like to share a couple of recent ones.
I'll tell a couple of stories. Whoa, 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 whoa. You can give me an update if you want.
The third quarter is, nine minutes in the third quarter, the Cavaliers are leading sixty to forty-six.
Boo.
Steph hasn't done anything yet.
Hasn't come alive yet. Teamwork yet.
Yes.
As Tammy had mentioned, you know, we have done a lot of outreach through social media, the website, SMC Alert, Twitter, Facebook, Nextdoor. I know Chief Barberini and I are working to really reach out to the public, especially during emergencies, to inform the public of certain things that they could avoid in case, you know, they're going in certain areas, that we can mitigate the emergency a little better. Couple of things, recently, we used Nextdoor, was used to reach out to the citizens, and we offered a community CPR class, and it filled up immediately. So that was an example of, you know, using Nextdoor to outreach to the public, and it was very successful. The other, I don't know if you heard, the recent safe surrender of an infant up at Station Fifty-Two also received almost four thousand hits on the department's Facebook page within the first few hours of it being posted. So it's, as, you know, everyone has said, social media is here, we need to, you know, have a real good plan to utilize every opportunity that we can, and those are just a couple of examples of how we've used social media to outreach to the public. So with that said, I'll turn back over to Tammy.
So another important technology project was something that was approved recently in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, was the city's geographic information system. The GIS has assisted both city staff and the community. So GIS assists with help locating and identifying certain utilities, like water sewer, above and below ground utilities on city maps. And you can also go to the city's website and find information for the public. So the public uses the GIS to provide information on property boundaries and other county assessor data, hazard identification like flood zones or seismic activity or fault lines. So it's been very, very helpful for the public, because before they've had to go through the county, or they've had to get information from different resources, this way, it's on the city's website, it's just one click away. It also posts information about garage sales and crime data on the city's website, on the police department website page.
Not necessarily on the same.
No, no, not on the same, not on the same page, in different areas. So the city needs, this really says that the city really needs to keep up to date on the infrastructure in order to support technology. Everyone wants something faster and better and more information, so city has, the city has to keep up with that demand. It will continue to replace servers and technology equipment, switches and software to keep up, also to continue to approve security issues and identify and address disaster recovery concerns. You're all aware of a neighboring agency who had a ransomware virus go through their police department, so our IT staff is continually to keep up to date and trained in those areas. And as you see in the supplemental, there is a request to reclassify one of our computer techs to a systems administrator. It is just the complexity of that position, it's no longer answering the phones and unlocking someone other password or changing toner in the printer, it is ongoing and it's ever-changing.
I hope toner changing ever been-
Can do that one.
I hope so. The city will continue to implement technology initiatives across the different departments. We'll be working with the community development department to roll out the online building permitting process, and when finance goes to implement their new software, we'll be assisting, the IT department will be assisting with that. A large part is also getting up to speed with technology and changes and ongoing training through ongoing training. The HR department continues to address the need for ongoing training, we have several resources for employees. I know you heard from the police chief, you'll hear from the fire chief about training for their employees and succession planning. I think the program and the training that the HR department offers could assist with that. We have opportunities for leadership training and citywide training. With that, I'm here to answer any questions before I turn it over to the fire chief to talk about succession planning.
I just want to recommend, because as I was going through this, I was, I had the website on, because I was going through and looking at various departments, and I'm happy to say that a lot of it is up to date. I'm not going to point out certain departments, but I would encourage every department to check your data, because there's some departments that are working off of materials that are dated 2010, 2011. Yeah, maybe that's, but don't put a document, don't show a document that, I don't want to pull up a document that says 2011 on it, because then I'm thinking, it's five years old, there's got to be something. Go through it, you know, check it, make sure if it's all still valid, put a 2016 on it. But my concern, you know, and that's the thing, is that, you know, the chief's talking about stuff, and I'm, I'm online all the time. I mean, I've been laughed at for the last, how many years, about my Facebook page and how I communicate. But how do you get, I mean, I don't, I'm not aware of your social media. So how do we get the people to find out about it? The website's great, but see, a lot of people aren't going to websites now, and how do you get them to know that you can find a garage sale on the city website? We've got to get into all of them, and I think, I think what you said is that we're going, you're going to establish a policy so that you can have maybe city departments, more city departments and, you know, on Facebook.
I think that's the goal is for the city departments.
Because you've got to be on everything.
And somewhat centralized through the city manager's office as well, to get more departments on social media. I think what we need to do is make sure what we're doing is working, before we roll out to everybody, make sure that it's working and that we're getting the information out quickly and there's a process.
You have to have someone doing it every day. And it's maybe not a full-time job, but someone's got to do something every day on that, or else you're going to lose it.
And that's part of the, that's part of the policy as well, is those expectations, what are the expectations from the users, the people posting the information, and what gets posted, things like that. I think, again, I think we want all the departments to have somewhat of a presence of social media.
Thank you. Anything else?
This is for IT and HR?
Mm-hmm.
On the IT, what would you, what would we, you gave the great example about, I guess, being taken over, per se, being held hostage, and let's, you know, you've heard that in the news now, that that's as far as getting in through the back door and then holding hostage, getting a ransom, and then they turn the system back on, they lock everybody out. So there's that, but are there other things that the city of San Bruno should be, or any municipality, but ours specifically, should be cognizant of, aware, are we, what's out there next that we should be planning for today? Are there steps, and what are we doing to be proactive to what could happen to us? We obviously, through the IT department with Mr. Jackson, we have a backup process, which we did not have before, so if we go down, great. I know we had, we've had some phone intermittent issues that affect the city, obviously. So I'm trying to, I guess, asking a broad perspective, what could be next and what are we doing to be proactive in that?
So I'll ask the IT manager to answer that question about what's next. What I can, what I can tell you, that the wise IT manager said to us about viruses and being aware, is Eric had mentioned that you can have all these firewalls and software in place to catch the virus, but that's being reactive. What's proactive and what's very important is making sure employees are aware of what's out there and to prevent it from them clicking and opening up email. What we will plan, what we will plan to do soon is, we will put a program in place, and we are planning on rolling this out to every department and going to talk to them about what to look for, and so the IT staff will be training employees, mandatory training, so it prevents them from actually opening up a document and spreading the virus.
I wanted to reiterate what Tammy mentioned. Our biggest threat, again, at this point, is the ransomware virus. Several agencies have been hit throughout California, it's a major concern. Our best defense is staff and it's training. Tammy and I spoke about two weeks ago after the infection in the other city, other agency, that we have to start a very proactive training program for all staff. That's our best and our first line of defense. In addition to that, from a technology perspective, in terms of protecting a city, we have about three or four redundant data protection systems in place. And in addition to that, Tammy and I also spoke about what other cities are beginning to do is to locate their data, a second, not a second data center, but to relocate their data in another location outside the city limits. Normally, that's even outside the state. So we've talked about that, I have costs on that, it's very small amount, but that gives us another level of redundancy in our data. Our data is our most important asset we have, our other systems are pretty safe, we, our email system is hosted, so that's not on-premise or it's not on-location, that's protected in data centers throughout the country, and we also, again, have our existing redundant systems. We have a disaster recovery site at Police Plaza, which backs up data between four and six hours every day, and that's another line of defense. And we've tested that, it works great, our disaster recovery system has been proven in terms of our network stability. In the last year, we've only had a four-hour outage on our district system, so that's about a hundred percent of time. So, again, it depends on, staff training and staff here are very good in terms of, you know, knowing the policies, procedures, warning signs, and getting one of us on the phone if they see anything suspicious. So it's a combination of quite a few different aspects, it's staff training, it's the technology, they all go hand in hand.
Is the training, the first line of defense, as you said, which is educating and training the staff, is that within one of the goals and objectives and/or money's financed through this budget for that to occur? Or is that just a very simple thing that we're just already doing?
I can take that, Tammy, if you wish. The staff training is basically-
I'm looking both ways, she's not sure who I'm looking at.
When I mention staff training, I begin to smile, because that's something we love to do, me and my staff. We would love to start drop-in training, maybe a couple of times a month, and have actual set training for all staff, mandatory training, to again, to educate everyone on the different threats that are out there, and also just computer usage. So the staff training perspective, that is no cost to the city.
And is that a goal and objective that's in the budget? I will turn to technology, but I'm already on HR, so is that, is that within the goals and objectives?
Maybe I can address that. I think the ransomware issue in particular arose after we were well into preparation of the budget, and so we'll make sure that it gets reflected in the final version of the budget, because I don't believe, I don't recall that it's in here, and this newly understood need for the mandatory training is relatively recent, and like I said, I'm guessing that it's, that it didn't find its way into the budget. But as manager and the director indicated, this is something we, we have a very highly capable and eager staff who are well able to provide that training for our staff on a regular, on a regular basis.
And while you have that training, you can also multitask and then do the training on the toner and the coffee. That's all I had for IT, unless anybody else want to add something? And then HR. On the goals and objectives, there's a couple, three things I have questions on. On the, where we send staff for the occupational health clinic? When was the last time we've gone out and looked at other opportunities or options? Are they still viable? Have, are there, is there better service that would provide better assistance to our staff when they're, when they need to go to those clinics?
I think the last time we went out for, to the Ahmed Clinic, Ahmed Clinic was probably about four or five years ago. And then before that, I don't think the city changed for probably ten, fifteen years.
Is there any value or benefit to see or about other options or opportunities, whether it's cost savings or just better services, whether it's distance of travel or whether it's just better, I want our staff, when they go to clinic, and I've gone to a few for work, for what I do, and there are sometimes night and day between clinics and how the staff is treated.
Absolutely. So we go to a monthly HR group meeting, and we ask that question to the different cities around here, what's their satisfaction with their clinics? And it's about, I think it's, there's pluses and minuses with all of them, but absolutely, we will, we will look at that, we've looked at some already, we can continue to look and evaluate that.
Okay, thank you. It says here oversee the city liaison program, which provides support and resources to Glenview residents, and those are impacted by the fires. So how much still is continuing on in this category as a goal and objective for this next year? Is it time-wise or percent, or can you quantify that?
So I would, well, it is not ongoing and, and there is not a lot, however, there are some issues that can come up randomly. I suspect in the next few years, or in the next year, there won't be any, but there has been a few that has come, that have come up that we've addressed.
Okay. Last one, monitor and evaluate employee benefit programs and maximize the quality of care, cost effectiveness, responsiveness and delivery of services. What, can you elaborate a little bit what that goal is?
So we've used an insurance broker to assist with pricing, life insurance, or our employee assistance program. We've done that when the, when the contract comes up. I think the last time it came up was a couple of years ago, we saved the city about thirty thousand dollars by doing that. So we would do that periodically when the contracts are up.
And they're coming up.
So there would be coming up this next year, yes.
Okay, that's good to do. Thank you.
Anything else, Brad?
Quick question, clarifying, when for negotiations with our different units, can you give us a quick, what's, when are they expiring? Everybody's expiring next year, how's that?
There are five bargaining units. MOU's expiring at the end of this year. That is the mid-management group, the miscellaneous group, fire, public safety mid-management, and the management group, the department ed group. Police does not expire until December of 2017. of 2017.
And then, just on that, it made me think of something. We do have in the professional services, for $30,000 for a negotiator during this process?
Yes.
What does the city, and I guess I've been on the council, but I want to hear, what are we specifically receiving for the $30,000? And does that encompass all units from start to finish until the sign, or is there a point to where they come back and say it's taking too long?
Well, I think we've been successful in getting contracts settled. And the $30,000 covers the lead negotiator for negotiations. That covers, I would say, for the bargaining units, the managers, the department ed group. We don't have a negotiator. The city manager is the negotiator for that, lead negotiator, but the negotiator would cover those four other bargaining units.
From start to finish?
From start to finish.
Okay. Thank you.
In about two weeks, and the fire engine in August or early September, and the fire truck in November. As the transition process evolves, we also face the issue of losing a large number of veteran fire officers from the department. The department will lose four or five chief officers in the next fiscal year. Last year, I reported that one-third of the department had three years or less experience. There is a chance that we could lose an additional six to 10 personnel in the next year or two. This will mean that almost two-thirds of the department will have five years of experience or less. Wow, you might say, right? I wrote that in there for your response.
Wow.
Should have had fireworks.
Hey, they're illegal. This, though, is an exciting time in the San Bruno Fire Department, as we see a complete retooling of the workforce. This has created promotional opportunities and a buzz of youthful enthusiasm. The hiring trend may continue over the next few years, and the department anticipates hiring at least three new firefighters in this fiscal year. This is why the department is proposing to reinstate a previously defunded firefighter position. This could also be somewhat of a cost savings. Also proposed in the enhancements is additional cost for equipment of anticipated new hires. With the potential retirement of the fire marshal in December, the required adoption of the new fire code by January of 2017, and the proposed number of large-scale developments, we are also asking for retention of our fire inspector, which is on the list of recommended enhancements. We are not alone in this hiring trend, as many departments throughout the county are facing the same turnover of an older workforce. This is a trend in public service, as this hiring cycle usually occurs about every 25 to 30 years, in conjunction with people retiring. It is essential to forecast vacancies, timelines in conjunction with recruitments, to keep ahead of the game by maintaining an efficient hiring process and maintained workforce. How are we addressing this currently? In conjunction with HR, the department is currently finishing recruitment for entry-level firefighter, and has also begun the planning of initiating promotional recruitments for fire captain, battalion chief, fire marshal, and fire chief. The department has also implemented enacting battalion chief and captain programs, in an effort to address these promotional opportunities. We will continue to pursue every opportunity to provide training and education to employees, while trying to address these succession planning needs. Now on to a couple of outreach programs and emergency preparedness. In an effort to prepare the city for all emergencies, the emergency preparation battalion chief will continue to evaluate emergency operation needs, upgrade equipment, and provide training to all city staff. Staff will continue to participate in annual county drills and exercises. The city's Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, training programs continue to gain community support, and will offer two classes annually. The 20-hour, seven-week course continues to train residents on a variety of disaster preparedness topics vital to surviving and assisting city staff during major emergencies. CERT members will continue to participate in county-wide emergency preparedness drills and exercises. At the recent community day in the park, we were able to sign up a number of citizens for the next class. We're also very excited about the current AED program, which we recently purchased and installed new automatic external defibrillators in all city buildings, and will soon equip police vehicles with automatic external defibrillators. The department remains optimistic and excited as the rebuilding of the San Bruno Fire Department continues. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So youthful enthusiasm is compared to what? That's all right.
Older enthusiasm.
Seized in experience.
Anything for the chief? Rico?
Yes, thank you. I guess, asked some of the similar questions that I did to the police chief. How was the overtime for the department this year? Or, not this year, but from the past year. You were asking for no increase of the $675,000 from last time? Yes, you're not asking for anymore, or no, you met it well?
We're asking for the same amount. But historically, that's been a kind of a conservative number. Recently, we've had a number of long-term injuries that have created, probably us to go over that amount. So I think with an older workforce, as we transition over the next year or two, I've told Connie this, but I really anticipate that we will bring that number down because of less injuries to, like I said, an older workforce. There's that word again. Sorry. Maybe that's not politically correct, but experienced workforce.
Experienced workforce, a mature workforce. Under the gas and oil, and I don't want to get to every line on it, but it's down $6,000. And I guess it's just because, obviously, it's documented when you fill up, so you're, we're just, we're going less places, I guess.
And the gas prices have gone down.
Well, and other places has gone up, in other departments. That's why I was like, wow, it's a big dip.
Yeah, finance calculates that.
So it's perfect.
So what we do is look at historical, and then base it on the prices. So, you're right, it's probably decreasing. They probably are not using as much.
Try to be frugal.
And we appreciate that. I know she don't drive around town.
Did she be running to a couple of the calls?
Are you going to buy a bicycle?
And then, to the finance director, there was last year $6204 for supplies. Did that get merged into $6102?
Is that operating supplies?
It's operational supplies.
Yeah, so when we were doing the budget, we noticed that there were several different supplies. There was office supplies, there was operating supplies, there was supplies, there was building and facility supplies. There was, I can't, there was probably five or six different supply accounts. So we obviously need office supplies because of the paper and routine pencils, things like that. So what we said is, let's just put it all in operating supplies, because that's what it really is. So you'll see that maybe those paragraphs are a lot bigger than they have been in the past, because they're a combination of the different supplies accounts.
And then our county service charges for hazmat materials, is it just the cost of doing business has gone up?
Yes.
Because I see the reports for the hazmat responses for the county at the emergency services council. I don't see, as far as the usage for our city, up. But you're just saying that the cost has gone up.
The county sent us, you know, projected increases, and that's just what we have to pay.
Just based on the population. So with the, and I understand what you said about the overtime, are we finding, or do we have a lot of mandatory shift required from the fire department lately?
At this time, we do, because of the number of worker comp cases.
And you were asking to add a firefighter, as you call it, from an unfunded position, you want to refund it. I would call that it went a way through attrition, potentially, so it doesn't exist. And you're asking for a new position to be authorized. Would that be fair?
It's just a different perspective, I guess.
On this side of the table, you're asking for a new position.
We've had that conversation.
It sounds like the city manager, all of a sudden. Yes, yes.
But you're alluding to the cost savings, because you want to make a 10 per shift?
Correct.
And so your argument would be that, well, with that, if there's illness, or injury, or vacation, then there's less overtime, which we're exceeding now.
Right. Yeah, so if you took a particular shift that had nine, and you also, which has happened historically over the last year or two, with injuries and vacancies, I mean, with people taking vacations and stuff, it's projected to be a cost estimate of over $200,000 a year, versus hiring a firefighter, which is, with full cost benefits of about $140,000. So potentially, you're looking at a $60,000 savings, but that does not really equate to a savings because of what the historical overtime costs have been.
So, just to clarify a moment.
You guys understand that.
So we're not...
I got it all in highlighter right now.
So we're not saying that there would be a budget savings, but there would be a savings in actual overtime, because actual overtime has exceeded the budget over the last probably three or four years, I would say. So that's why we didn't want to say that there would be, you know, we didn't want to put a negative there and say that there's going to be a budget savings, because we're not anticipating that.
So we've gone over, so how bad have we gone over? About. I don't need to fix it.
It's quite a bit, I believe.
Yeah, I would say we're probably going to be about $500,000 over.
Okay. I think we'll handle that note for now.
Anyone else for the chief? Clarification on the part-time fire inspector. So, when a development requires that service, that's a cost recoverable charge that the developer pays, or the building pays for that service? Is that true?
For the inspector?
For the inspection side.
It depends on what kind of inspection it is, but there are inspections that we recover cost for, yes.
How much percent would that be, you think? Is it, I just remember when George Devendorf was here, and he was just constantly on getting the inspections, and it seemed like for every fire permit we issued, that was cost recoverable to the fire department, which we could pay for the inspector. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I would say because of our permit process, and also the apartment inspections that we do, we more than make up for what his cost is.
Okay.
So some of the costs are directly recoverable, others of them are, there's a revenue in the budget for fire inspection?
Do they get a certain percentage of the permit?
I'm not sure how it's calculated.
Does who get a certain percentage?
The fire department get a portion of the fees for that permit?
Right, they're separate fees collected.
And it goes under their department revenues, under the general fund?
It goes under our revenues, but it goes into the general fund.
As fire inspection permit fee, I believe is what it's called.
Okay, so we need another, we need another one, a part-time fire inspector, whenever that comes, the building needs an inspection, so that one day, he comes out, or how often is he around?
No, he's, well...
He or she?
Yeah. We've had him the last two years, this will be the third year that we hope to retain him. But, yeah, he assists the fire marshal in doing all kinds of, you know, nuisance inspections, and just any type of inspection that comes up. So, that's, so you're correct.
Well, I think the issue is much like the community development director mentioned earlier, that we are staffing with part-time contractors. This position was shown in the budget last year as a one-time enhancement. It's continuing to be necessary and affordable, and so we're including it again as an enhancement. It would not be, because you approved it on a one-time basis last year, it doesn't go into the base budget.
Okay, so I guess, when I see the $21,000 that is proposed to be budgeted for it, that is from the general fund, that doesn't include any of the recoverable fees that those inspections were paid for?
Correct.
How much is that, how much is that inspector really costing, and $21,000 of it is extra?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that true? Well, we do receive revenue, you know, but I don't know how much is, can be attributed to this one, because we also receive it from the fire marshal.
About $150,000 approximately for the inspector.
The problem is, the problem is, is we don't keep track of who does the inspection between the fire marshal and the part-time inspector. Maybe something we should probably track to see. But his, but, you know, whenever we do inspections, that we collect revenue on, it just goes into the revenue account for inspections.
Okay, all right.
I don't know if that answers the question.
No, I just wanted to see how that kind of...
And we can read the next study session. I'll have that number for you.
If it was a fire permit, then you know who does the permit, because the person who does the permit has to log in.
Right, right.
And so you could back out.
Right.
How much that is.
But on our side, for the finance side, we just see it, it would have to be through the, we'd have to get the information from the permit side, right?
Okay.
Because we just, it all comes through our finance system, it's a lump sum and that.
Okay. I'll look forward to that.
Anything else for the chief?